To order at six oh two P M. Um, we will move into our, I'm sorry, just got to go to the table. We will move into our land acknowledgement, land acknowledgement statement. The town of Culvers is located in traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. We honor the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land, as well as all indigenous peoples who have helped shape and continue to strengthen our community. We'll now move to number three, adoption of the agenda. Um, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Seeing none, we will consider that accepted. And then we will move on to the adoption of the previous minutes, so five point one. Is the November nineteenth regular council meeting minutes? Is there any changes, additions, or deletions? No, seeing none, we want to move on to five point two, which is the November twenty first, twenty twenty four intergovernmental committee meeting minutes. Any changes, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, we will consider those adopted. Um, and now we will move on to our delegation. We have Staff Sergeant Mike Newman here from the R C M P um to provide an update for councils. So we'll turn it over to you for your presentation and then um open it up to council afterwards.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And welcome.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Some new faces here since my last visit, for sure, so uh it's nice to see some old friends and acquaintances, so uh welcome back, Larry.
Thank you very much, Sergeant.
Yeah.
This neighborhood.
This this area, yeah.
We we smashed him, his finances were good.
That's a that's a that's a good capture, Larry, there, yeah.
I love the familiarity too and the familiar face that has stayed, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. It's great. Looks like we built a solid team here, so that's awesome. Uh, yeah, so um I provided a bit of a stats package that I had our our people in K Division do up and provided that ahead of time, so hopefully you have a chance to look over that. Uh, before I get to that, uh, just kind of a little touch base on a few things. Uh, we are, seem like we're always busy. Still same detachment areas, still lots of calls for service. Uh, we're still struggling a little bit with manpower as far as shortages for maternity leaves, those types of things, like any corporation or any company. Uh, we are managing, we're a lot better off than we were a few years ago when I first got here, though. Uh, we had a busy fire, we did have to supply some bodies up to the fires uh in Jasper and other areas in the province. Uh, that's purely commercial contracts, so we did do that as well. Um, and you know, that uh we're we're happy to help where we can, for sure, uh, because someday it could be us that needs that help down here, so. Um, doing that uh with with open arms, for sure. Um, add a new sergeant who started in April, Sean Dutch. Um, he replaced Dave Marantet, we all remember Dave, he was here for five years, I guess, probably. Uh, Dave moved on, I think I told you, went to uh Beaumont, and he's the staff sergeant in charge of the city of Beaumont detachment there, so he's he's doing well. Larry, to think that we we're we're a pretty good team, so he's uh he's learning his his own ways now and uh time to move on, so that's great for Dave. Still stay in touch with him. Um, we've had a lot of good, uh, as you mentioned, stats, uh, reduction in some crime, most of the serious crime types in Culvers. And I'll talk a bit about that as we go through the stats. I attribute that to our members doing some really good police work. Uh, our teamwork with other police agencies, Lethbridge Police, Scan. Uh, our crime reduction team out of Calgary has been down a lot, they were down a lot when we were having issues here with stolen vehicles and uh the likes. And really uh put a clamp on on these people as much as we can, I mean, we we do what we can, we arrest them, we charge them, and then it's up to the courts to to see what they want to do, but uh I think we've had some pretty good success there. I think, I hope, uh, the file count down is is a good thing, it's not because people aren't calling anymore. I think we got the message out, and I follow the Culvers um Facebook, whatever it is. And that has drastically reduced in crime type stuff. There still is the odd carjacking, not carjacking, but uh shoplifting of cars, things like that, but not near what it was last year and the year before, so I think we've had some great success there. Uh, we encourage police presence as a management team in all our communities, including Culvers. I I do know that we have some habitual houses in this town, like we do in every other town, that we frequent more than others. So um I'm happy to say that we we kind of have dealt with most of those frequent fires and they have moved on, I don't know where yet, so we'll figure that out as we go, but uh, you know, let's see, really, one of our our keys or tools is to keep the pressure on. They don't like the pressure, so they move on, uh, or we talk to the landlords and pressure on them. So uh we work hand in hand with bylaw here in the town as well, uh, I think that's been a good relationship. Uh, we have done a lot of uh community events in our detachment areas, including in here Culvers, Remember Day. Uh, we had, I had six different places I had to be at Remember's Day at the same time. We managed to do that and still provide policing to the area, so I was pretty happy with that and attending your parade, so. Yeah, just a quick snapshot there, uh, we are busy, but we do uh we do want to stay involved in the community, so please, if you have events coming up, let us know. We'll make uh make sure a member can attend, barring an emergency, for sure, but I know we have in the past, so. Uh, let's go to the stats, uh, if you want to go to the very first, um, yeah, thank you, that uh green blue graph. So that basically, I like the way that uh the lady who does these stats up, they're very simple to read and easy. And uh, I'm not a big guy on stats, but these tell a lot, so if you look at the average of file count for the last five, six years, you know, pretty s- pretty similar, uh, we had a spike last year in twenty twenty three, as we all know, and we did a lot of education and some community events and a lot of proactive policing in the area. I think we've seen the results of that in twenty twenty four a little bit anyways.
Can I ask a little bit, is that is that is a pretty big anomaly?
Yeah. Yeah.
Was that was that when we started actively working more with Scan to get some of the properties, to get some people to move along?
From twenty twenty three, yeah, for sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's that would, that's that's fantastic.
But also remember this, yeah, this twenty twenty four is only until November fifteenth, it's not the full year for files.
Yeah, but you know what, I'm feeling optimistic that it's gonna stay f- pretty stable.
I think we'll stay around that five fifty or something like, pretty stable, pretty pretty common, and that's what we like to see, for sure, but. Yeah, I mean, the the large amount of files in twenty twenty three where people were fed up and they were calling the police, and that's what we need, so we can feel that.
There's a couple homes that were.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet. If we go down to the next graph there, um, that one basically shows you um the month, file counts for the month, so basically uh twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, June was the busiest month for some reason, I don't know why, but uh, I mean, not by a lot. Uh, we have April, June, and September, all pretty high, high uh counts. High, but not really high for talent size, I mean, that's not a lot of of files generated, but. So nothing really jumped out at me there, I mean, summertime, uh, people, kids are out of school, end of June type of thing, I can see why the calls might increase there a little bit. If we go to the next one, it uh also breaks down kind of when the files were generated or when we had our calls for service, and pretty clear to see that between eight and, let's say, well, all the way early till ten at night, eight in the morning till ten at night are the busiest times for file generation, with the busiest being between one, one and three o'clock, which is kind of odd as well for a number, but. Um, and then the busiest uh day was Monday for file generations, and I can see that for businesses who come and find that they had a break in or something vandalized on Monday morning, we get those type of calls, or people going to use their car because they've been home all weekend or whatever, but nothing really earth shattering that jumped out at me for those stats as well. Okay, and then we'll go to the uh different file types by count. So this is kind of where we drill down and see what types of files we're coming to in Culvers. Um, and by uh by and large, it looks like mischief is our busiest uh file type, which is kind of a, it's not really a generic category for us, but it's, if it doesn't fit in anything else, you put it as mischief, because it's, you're basically taking away the enjoyment of somebody or something, uh, you're obstructing somebody's property or things like that. So that's where the mischief uh comes in, and we get a lot of those suspicious person vehicle properties, which are great to see, that people are still calling when something doesn't look right, or they're hearing something or seeing something. Um, assistance to getting police, a lot of uh calls to help for family disputes or just general assistance calls that really don't fit any other category. Still a lot of mental health calls, uh, we're seeing well-being checks are also uh are fairly high, which if somebody has an elderly parent or anybody that lives in this town and they don't live here, they call us today, can you go check on uh my aunt, we haven't heard from her in a week or whatever, so we we get a lot of those types of calls as well. Um, assaults, assist general publics are kind of the same numbers there. Uh, uttering threats and breaches of peace, breaches of peace can be lumped into mischief as well, where somebody's disturbing somebody's property. You can't really be charged for breach of peace, so we don't use that a lot, but uh it would go up to a mischief or mischief charge or something like that. So those are your top ten file counts for the town of Culvers. And then we'll drill down even more to the last two pages, and it kind of goes through the different categories of offenses and gives you a twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four snapshot of how many of those type offenses we had in Culvers. So when I look down this uh this chart, the big ones are always the assaults, uh uttering threats. So a lot of that is stemming from family, domestic violence. Uh, we had a lot of uh, you know, uttering threat type charges or between friends or whoever, and then the assaults as well, where somebody gets pushed or punched or shoved or whatever. That's our our biggest persons crime. Uh, property type crimes, our biggest one seems to be uh our thefts, so thefts from motor vehicles. Uh, theft of motor vehicle, uh, we have eleven of those in twenty twenty four, just within the town of uh Culvers, so that is still uh an issue and it's still ongoing now, we, I mean, people are still leaving their vehicles running in the morning, I had one this morning, not here, but in a different community where it's running, keys are in it, it's unlocked, and he comes out and it's gone. So we have to be smarter uh to try and prevent that a little bit, I'm not saying it's right to take somebody's truck, but we have to do what we can to make sure it's not us that are the victims, so. Uh, we still are seeing a bit of theft of motor vehicles, especially with the cold weather. Uh, theft unders, so that's any property that's under five thousand dollars in value that's stolen from your vehicle, from your yard, from your shed, those types of things. Uh, and then the mischief, uh, as I was talking about, these are the 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 charges that were laid, so we we laid twenty one mischief charges um throughout the year as well, and so far in twenty twenty four. Uh, offensive weapon type, um, we don't have anything disturbing the peace, failed to comply. Uh, basically, an air criminal code type offense, we we group down in the other criminal code category. On the second page, nothing, uh, these are the like drug uh charges, things like that. Uh, we did have um two trafficking charges so far this year in this uh community, which is good to see. Uh, well, not good to see, but it's good to see that our members are getting that evidence to lay those charges. And uh possession uh production charge as well. So um, mental health, uh, if you go down to federal, we're we're dealing a lot with mental health, people, people are in crisis, and uh we have an R P A C team, I'm not sure if the last time I was here, we had that R P A C team, which is a nurse from Alberta Health and a member. They're, we finally got a nurse from Alberta Health, so they're up and running and they're doing great work to support our members all over southern Alberta um and get that that urgent care that they need or urgent uh contacts uh through Alberta Health that we don't normally have because the police and medical don't really get along, if you believe that. We all, we have our privacy problems and uh we we want to keep our information to ourselves, but the nurse can find out from their side, we can find out from our side, and they can get together and figure out what's best for their client, so it's working really, really well. Um, then we go down into the uh um kind of driving violations or collisions, those types of things. So we had nine so far in parrots in uh Culvers. Uh, just in the town of Culvers this year so far, charged. And uh a total of fifty four uh provincial traffic tickets issued in Culvers. Some uh other traffic and a couple of other criminal codes, so that would be like if you're driving while you're suspended, things like that, you'd be charged on criminal code. And our common police activities, um, that we spend a lot of time with suspicious persons, vehicles, and property, and uh our spousal abuse, uh, which is domestic violence, we have a code that we score every file uh to keep track of that. We had twenty one of those this year, which is a lot for a small town like this, so. That's really our, a quick snapshot of the stats. I I'd be happy to answer any questions specific to any one of these charts or any other questions at all. And then at the very end, I do have uh, uh, Carleen had asked me uh about some collision stats for the intersection over here, and I think we spoke about that before a few years ago. Um, and I'll just let you know, I, our computer system, it purges certain offenses after two years, so I phoned up Alberta Transportation, I'm gonna get ten years of stats for that, so they'll be able to give us every uh collision report that was ever done for that, will will show up on their report, whereas my report is only what we have left on our, so it's the more serious uh injury or the one's causing death. Um, so, but yeah, I I'll answer questions first on on my presentation, then we can talk about the intersection.
Sorry, do you want to offer to counsel for questions, uh, Counsel Colton, a little bit of counsel if I can?
Thank you, uh, through the mayor. Um, I've just got a a couple of questions on on some of these here. If we're looking at, like, how can we sort of put some of these together and create correlations? Uh, so if we can do anything to mitigate some of these, right?
Mm-hmm.
That was my one question. My other question is, when we're looking at these kinds of instances, especially uh like, say, spousal abuse, is that just a number of calls in total or is that a number of calls to each new home?
No, that's number of call, that's number of incidents.
Number of incidents, so a number of them could be to the same home.
Numbers. Could be.
Or a few to the same home kind of thing, maybe.
And quite often.
That's what you're seeing?
That's what we're seeing, yeah.
That pattern, okay. Okay, so that's, but but my big one is um being able to sort of put some of these things together to say, okay, well, just find some causative factors, like we put a bunch of them, do a bunch of correlations out of the data?
Yeah, there. There there's a, the problem is that there's so many agencies that have a stake in this, especially like Lethbridge, let's say homelessness. It's not a policing problem, it's a societal problem, but everybody expects the police to deal with it. But really, it's, you know, social services, it's child welfare, it's it's all those things, and we find the same with domestic or spousal spousal assaults.
Oh, for sure.
Um, there's usually mental health concerns, there's usually financial problems, there's uh, you know, there's history of maybe the offender being abused or whatever, and it's, so there's a lot of things that um are in the background that we're not aware of. So to answer your question, we try and work with Child and Family Services, uh, what we do, um, but we can only do so much and um.
So if we were to advocate as a municipality for some, sorry, I just, this is still my question here.
Yeah.
And I apologize, it's got, if we were to advocate as a municipality for the resources in our community, say, if we're looking and saying, you know what, we're identifying mental health as a pretty big issue in our community, and we're seeing a number of things, things coming forward from that. Um, and if we were looking for, say, Alberta Mental Health to be able to um provide greater access to people in our community, not everybody drives, not everybody can get them, right? Like, that's a challenge here. So if we were to advocate for something like that, could we use some of these stats, or could we have uh?
These are your stats.
No, but or or could we have a lot of support that says, looking at these stats, we identify these and correlations
Yes.
that would lead us to, we require more mental health access?
Uh, I I would support any kind of uh initiative that any community has to try and deal with and work together with you guys, so absolutely.
Okay, that's brilliant, thank you very much.
F C S S, do you have an office? Do you have a boardroom at Lethbridge?
We do. Uh, we, well, it's Mary Jessica Warner, so they are in um Coldale, but they do come here, but that's one of the things we're looking at is,
Yeah.
or that I'm hoping to be able to work with them and with administration is to look at sort of that whole wellness, community wellness that has the R C P and F C S S and um Alberta Mental Health or Well, Alberta Health Services, and how do we get those resources where we need them, right?
Yeah. Right, absolutely, that would be a great starting point, they could set up access to all those that you mentioned, for sure.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor, thank you for the question, uh, go ahead, Counsel, I can.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, just with regards to the roadside suspensions for the alcohol, there there's been a significant increase from one to nine. I was just curious, when you see something like that, is there any like um mitigation measures that you guys might do, like work with the sheriffs to do like a check stop or something like that, is that something that you kind of can point and kind of work on, or?
Yeah, for sure, and I think we're we're seeing an increase across the province because of that new mandatory alcohol screening program that came in.
That would pay.
Um, where our police officers stop and sheriffs, they'll stop you, I don't know if any of you have experienced that, but you, we don't need grounds anymore as police to uh ask you or demand you to blow into our roadside uh screening device. Now, it's just, as long as we do it to everybody who stops, it's it's not a random thing, uh, so we're finding a lot more impaired drivers because of that legislation, I think that's part of the increase.
Yeah.
But yes, to answer your question, we we do uh check stops throughout the whole area with sheriffs, uh, even though they're not in our building anymore, we have a traffic services that that does that as well, and and yeah, you bet.
Awesome, thanks for that clarity and behind all of that increase.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good to know, thank you.
I don't know if anybody else experienced it, but I, it's not a bucket list, but I finally had to do it. It was because my tail light was burnt out. It was, took me quite a while to explain how you're supposed to operate it, but it was very exciting.
Oh, yes.
Come on, why?
I assume you passed it.
Well, yeah, I guess it would be the other way if I happened to put it.
Yeah, you probably won't be telling.
Hey, some of those group in Pakistan, okay, you guys, you know, I've experienced those things, okay?
Yeah, no, I I've experienced that too, it's um, it's very fast, it's like the window opens and and the rubber lights are set, so it's good.
Yeah.
Um, go ahead, Counsel, I can.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, hi, Florence. Um, so I was, I was curious, have have we had any chance to partner with our um peace officer and R C P locally to do any kind of uh our community engagement or outreach, like, in in our community yet?
Uh, we have, not, uh, I guess, I remember last year, we did that big presentation, and I think I think most of you were in attendance there. Since then, we've worked with him on more for calls for service, where he's experiencing some issues and needs our support or vice versa. Or, you know, if we're doing a check stop somewhere, we'll invite him along, for sure, but he only works a certain amount of hours, uh, which is tricky for him too, so. Yeah, we we will certainly, again, if if we need to, you know, I mean, frauds are are in the increase, we all know the scams are are continuing. We're still seeing people being scammed, so if if there's anything you can put out in your community newsletter is to reinforce a do not send money, uh, do not give anybody money, and to verify, verify, verify everything. Somebody's telling you on the phone before you send money, because this week, a lady, a ten thousand dollars. Um, you know, um, then her son catches on and calls us, but it's it's too late by then, it's long gone, so. But yes, to answer your question, we would love to do that again, and have Paralyne come back and and do another presentation.
Yeah.
With a great thanks.
You bet.
Is there any questions or comments from Counsel or staff? No? Okay, um, well, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for coming and thank you for your um your update. I I like seeing the the C S A, the analysis and um how it's changing, and it's good to see the twenty percent decrease, like you said, um, some of the factors that we talked about. Um, it's, you guys have certainly had a visible presence in our community, um, that's something that we continue to see, and I think that's really great, and probably contributing to um, you know, feelings of safety and and the the twenty percent decrease that we're seeing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, no, that's that's great. Do we want to chat about the intersection just quick?
All right, yes, yes, let's go on to that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I pulled off, or I didn't, I'm continually much smarter than me pull off a few steps, just from our computer. Bearing in mind that after two years, the non-serious motor vehicle collision gets purged off our system, just because we can't, Canada White can't keep every file, so. Um, in, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty four, uh, we had two uh death collisions, two separate ones, uh, where there was a death of each, and there was nine injury. And I only have four reportable, but there'll be lots more than that because um reportable meaning there there was no injury, but they uh they had to report that it was over five thousand dollars in damage, but those are the ones that would purge off after two years, so. Most of the time, we just had another one here not too long ago, when we have an accident there or a collision, it's it's pretty serious. Um, because it's, there's lots of high speed there, there's lots of lanes, it's it's a dangerous intersection, so um, I'm not sure. I know a few years ago, Mayor Council wanted to lobby the government to see what they could do to change or help improve that, the safety. You know, they put up the uh the rubber barricades in the middle and painted the big, and we still have collisions there, so, I mean, that maybe will solve a small problem, but it's not the answer yet, I don't think. So I I'm not sure what uh Mayor Council's intent is, but whatever you uh you used to do, I will support it any way I can, and I will get you those uh uh more accurate statistics once they're sent to me here.
Um, sorry.
All right, fair enough.
Uh, we, and and we have been meeting with uh Alberta Transportation about this, and they've kind of told us, well, it's not my problem, it was closed, closure, so.
Right, that's our solution, I'll come now.
And the other the other part is, we have discussed, you know, the possibility of putting lights in, and they said, well, that actually increases portions. Uh, but, and then when I asked them about, well, you know, what about seriousness of the collision then? And they just said, well, we don't track those, they just this, they just said, we just track if it's a collision and it gets reported.
Right.
So, so there's something missing data there, I think.
Yeah, for sure, and and there there's different categories, right? There's the reportable with no injuries, there's injuries, and then there's fatalities. So I I think those are the important ones to look at.
And and they must report it differently, I think, than, well, R C P maybe, I think.
All our collision reports go into Alberta Transportation for, that's where they get their data from, right? Because we get the report, we do up their form, it's that collision report, if any of you have done it before, and then it gets sent into Alberta Transportation. So our data is theirs and theirs is ours, right? So I'm I'm not sure, and we have to score them a certain way, depending on what they are, whether they're injured, uh, whether they're deaf or whether they're just reportable with no injury.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So some of the messaging we also get um is that in terms of numbers, um, and it's never okay, but in terms of numbers, they they're saying that, you know, these numbers are actually relatively okay for that kind of a an access onto the highway compared to others in the province. And, you know, every time they say things like that to me, they're on the back of my next dance, huh? Because whenever you have a small town, one impacts town, right? And so there's that ripple effect, but I think that's probably our big fight about not having uh something that's a little more constant there, right?
Yeah, and and I know, being, working for the government for the past thirty five years in my career, um, the only time that you will get action is usually when there's enough frequency, right? So they 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 only have so much money, and they're going to give the money where it's most needed, and they're, and it's staff driven right now.
Yeah, and and it has to be, I mean, it has to be triaged, but it just, it's it's hard to have those kinds of conversations when you try to explain that,
Yeah, yeah.
you know, like a a death at our intersection has an effect on our entire community.
Absolutely.
Right, in a larger center, one death may not impact as much. And I, it's not that any death is okay and doesn't have an impact, but you understand what I'm saying in terms of,
Yeah.
in terms of the impact to the entire community and the perception of safety and, you know, those fears and, well, and just the grief as well, right? You know?
Sure.
But but I mean, that's not what they look at, yeah, they just look at numbers.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, were they ever speaking about a speed reduction through their highway, or that's off the table too, probably?
There there's been um, there's been some conversation, I think that conversation that we we have sometimes kind of is about um, because there has been progress to make it marginally more safer, right? And and since then, it it would appear that things have improved. Um, I think that the thing that gets us in trouble is human error, right? Because it's people not waiting, people not looking, people being impatient, um, which is basically impossible to account for, but um, again, maybe this is a little bit in opposition to what everybody else is saying, but I would say that the intersection, it is safe, it's just um, again, it's 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 human error and people making mistakes. Um, and so, but but as council collectively, like, one of our um advocacy points is to always, always to be looking out for um residents of Culvers, like, say, that in and out of town and around town, and so safety is is a high priority, but also, like, at what point does human error come into it? Um, and how does that affect decisions about what to do there? And then in terms of um the speed limit reduction and things like that, like, it it's basically been told to us, like, that's not something that's gonna happen without it closing down at all, so I think it's also kind of a delicate thing for us because we still don't have that access and not have a complete. thing for us because we still don't have that access and not have it completely shut down. Kelly, do you wanna go ahead and say something?
Can I just ask one question? Would some education on how to use this kind of intersection help putting out to our residents? Cause I see a lot of people don't know about that yet.
Well, I'm just Well, and every intersection seems to be different. Even these traffic circles are putting out no effort. I mean, we still get pretty bad collisions there, but people don't understand how to use it.
They're flying over the center of the
Or not seeing it at all, which I don't know how that's possible, but.
Not about, yeah.
Uh, could you get a proper drawing and put something out to our social media, to our
Yeah, I wouldn't be the guy to do that, but maybe I don't even understand it, but uh I mean, through Alberta Transportation, they must have um a lot of safety, maybe some education through your community, um, website, um.
But that's a that's a really good question. Sorry, we're looking at the problem and we'll jump to uh this area.
But
Thank you. But it might kind of seem to know that um when we talk about reducing speed, um, they say that it increases risk
Mm-hmm.
because people won't follow that reduction. And then then as you're pulling out, you believe that people are going eighty, it increases risk. Do you have stats that would sort of speak to that? Or, 'cause sometimes sometimes when you're speaking in one department, those stats are a little skewed to share their message better.
Right. Right, and that they would have to have speed studies done, which we don't
Right. Okay.
I'm not equipped to do any kind of speed study like that, but I'm sure they've they've probably done speed studies there, you know, where you drive along the lines and make manner.
I see.
Like, that's a busy highway. So for the amount of traffic.
It is, and they maybe recommend it's the the eighty by Coldale.
Yeah.
And saying they're seeing that there's not a there's not a reduction in speed in in a certain percentage of vehicles. And so if you were trying to drive out onto that and think people are going eighty, it increases your uh comfort or decreases your vigilance and give you, you know?
Yeah.
And I, yeah, but that's kind of what that conversation is, A and M.
Yeah. I I know driving through Coldale is not confusing, but I mean, you go from a hundred down to seventy, down to fifty, then up to seventy and like let's just keep it one speed and and it's it's it they confuse the heck out of it, right? So, and it's it's tricky. But how about this, I'll wait I'll wait to get those stats back, I'll provide them to the C I O, and then we can have further conversations about where we wanna go next with it, or you guys wanna go?
Beautiful, that sounds great. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Sam, you have your
Sure, uh, thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor. Just coming to add, we have explored uh safety instructions at that intersection four two and have heard that there's no actual guidelines for that particular one. So, we're open to it, perhaps this is something that we work on together. Um, and come up with some sort of plan about how best to navigate it, but I don't think a Water Transportation has a set rule for this particular one.
Yeah, and they didn't have a diagram either, did they, or a specific
No, we don't have diagrams for this.
No way.
'Cause it was custom custom built.
Well, and I think and I think, sorry, I think what would be an issue would be is if we, they put out a diagram, are we and it's wrong or somebody does, it's just the live, you know what I mean? Like, that's that's the other issue that you may wanna consider too, is
Are we Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, Water Transportation, it's their their road, it's their intersection.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if we could just put some general stuff out about
To hear.
being safe, paying attention and, you know, or
Use an alternate route?
Yeah, and you use a back route, so.
Yeah, or even even if we um have a a better understanding about which direction it's because of entering or like what particular direction accidents are happening on, and that can help by some clarification on safety points. If it's always going from north to south or if it's coming into town, then you know those are key areas that we need to focus on, on education and hope where to look in line.
Yeah. I'd say it's the left turns.
Out of town.
Yeah.
Out of out of town or in.
Out.
Or into town.
Or into town from the, from your traveling.
And and that's why they say they're gonna s- close that to center because if we if we push any farther, they're they're just gonna shut down the center. So it's either right in, right?
Oh, I see. And you Right.
But when they were having that conversation here, we had um, there's all kinds of things going on, but somebody had a uh a heart attack in the park and the ambulance was trying to get out of town to go left, to go into the city. And so hopefully that kind of put that to rest, but I I think it's still just held over our head.
Yeah.
The county, you know, advocates strongly to say, no, we need that in this enough, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But it's always gonna be an ongoing thing.
Yeah, awesome. Um, is there anything else?
Yeah. Not for me.
Yeah, no. Well, thank you for that very interesting discussion of both highways, always a uh a hot spot for us, so.
Yeah, for sure. It's um, that's it. Uh, just so I know, the the format of these statistics, is that something that that this Mayor Council would like to see in the future? I think it's pretty, is there anything that that you'd like to see in addition, or is this kind of coverage?
Yeah, uh, for yourself, I really like the the file count and the the crime scene or sorry, crime uh statistics analysis.
Yeah, okay. That's a pretty standard package. I mean, it's you know, we don't rely on stats totally, but this gives a pretty good snapshot year over year.
Yeah.
And kind of where we sit now for for this year, so.
Yeah, and I I think it's really cool that you come in and explain this all to us and really break it down and just um, you know, shared some highlights. I hope what's happening too.
Sure.
It's very interesting.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah. Awesome. Well, there's nothing else and we will uh let you go.
All right.
Thanks very much.
Although it is adventurous to stick around.
Adventure?
That's a budget conversation.
Oh, I have my own budget meetings. Thanks. Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you. Sure. Okay, um. Okay, so we're just gonna move back a little bit um to five point two. We had a recommendation coming out of our intergovernmental committee meeting. Um, and that was a recommendation to council to request the results of the engagement sessions that were hosted by Palisir School Division regarding the Culvers High School and provide the results back to committee of the whole to be adopted. Would anybody like to uh sponsor that motion?
I'll get that motion.
Councilor Colwell?
Yeah.
Okay, would you like to speak to that motion at all? Or would you like to, do we, do is there any questions on the motion? Or are you there? That Heather's making? Okay, um, if there's no questions, um, I've just read the motion notes, um, so I will leave it at that. Um, and I'll let you speak to it, Heather, if you'd like to speak to the motion.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I mean, we had some wonderful conversations about uh some increased funding um up at Alberta communities. Um, there were a number of some council that had the opportunity to speak with our Minister of Education. Um, we know that we're in that line and we know that we need to sort of tighten up our partnership. And so I think it's very important that we do have these results so that as a as the municipality, we can determine how best to partner with the school. What is our municipality looking for? What are people looking for uh in terms of our partnership? Yeah, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Would anybody else in council like to speak to this? Um, okay, Heather, would you like to close?
Um, I think that's everything. Thank you.
Okay, um, okay, so the motion is Councilor Colwell made the motion that the intergovernmental committee recommendation to council to request the results of the engagement sessions that were hosted by Palisir School Division regarding the Culvers High School and provide the results back to committee of the whole be adopted. Um, all those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to um, I mean, number seven, staff report. So the first one here is the administrative administration update report. Um, and I will turn it over to council to see if there's any questions on the report and the information included. Councilor Putrida, go ahead, please.
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor Lawrence. Um, so I was just curious with the Canada Post disruptions ongoing. Do you have any contingency plans to deal with this difficulty longer? Keeps continues, I guess. Communicating.
Good question.
Thank you, Councilor Putrida for the question. Uh, yes, we are making some some plans with regard to uh distributing our utility bills. I think that would be one of the biggest distractions that will be coming up, um, including uh increasing communications and also doing another um information class to uh help the community uh know about the bills as well. So, um, we will communicate the best we can on social media, um, and also through our uh newsletter, if it's still applicable at that time. And um, anybody from the community is welcome to come to the office as well and request a printed utility bill. Um, and I'll just double check with my contractor club services if they're in at it.
Uh, thank you, Sarah. Uh, so just to make clear, we won't be sending any of the actual mailing ones out for this month. Um, but we will be, but yeah, as you say, go on the social media where people know. And hopefully that will actually drum up some of that e-billing as well, um, which I'm not intentionally do a push for that as well and try and get a small paperless than we can. Yes, so we got it.
For for if there's any residents who say don't do that, is there an extension or payment period, I guess?
Through the chair to Councilor Colwell, we we just touched on that today, didn't we? Um, I think we will come back to council on that after we get a little bit of a discussion up.
Any other questions to council or go ahead, Councilor Ackerman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Lawrence. Um, just with regards to the dog park, it's exciting to see that a contractor has been ready for that. Um, I see we across the agreement now with that coast land department and they're getting the license and no notify us once a green has been finalized. Do we have any sort of rough ballpark on that might appear, typical timelines associated with that?
Uh, to the chair, the Councilor Ackerman's, uh, we certainly hope uh sooner than later. We are um working with that both of us if we can to ensure that these permissions um move forward, um, so long as the ground is not frozen. We can continue working on the project, but until then, we just have to wait. Kelly, do you have anything else you'd like to add or?
Um, no, uh, we applied for the uh in August for this. I've had numerous emails and phone calls with them. Trying to expedite it because my contractor could get started uh mid-December here and get some holes in the ground and then they could construct over the winter. But uh, yeah, I think my last email went out uh Thursday or Friday last week. Can they just tell me it's with the land department now?
It's August. Thank you for the update.
Um, I just have a question, um, um, for operations and and infrastructure, um, about the parking lots, parking lot and lighting thing and stuff. Um, when we talked about paving the parking lots, we had talked about not doing it during school hours. I I think it was suggested in front of administration um, just to not disrupt the the kids walking and everything like that. But I noticed that the the parking lot lighting is being installed during, like right now, during school hours. Um, I guess it seems to be going okay as far as I can see. Um, it's a little bit chaotic, but would that change our decision to to go ahead with the paving?
Um, yeah, to council through the deputy mayor, um, yeah, that's a decision yet to be made. Um, I'm actually meeting with uh N P E this week, uh, getting our roads project and the paving contracts ready to go off over the winter to get. And we have to work with whoever gets the contract.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to meet their schedule, we're gonna have to work on timelines, um, but safety will always be a factor. So if you, you know, if they can do one, fence it off and complete one and then do the other, um, yeah, I'd say it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult to navigate.
Yeah.
Uh, 'cause we'll have to take into account their schedules. Uh, they make price set on what we put in the contract for having it done dates.
Okay.
Uh, we usually, if you give the contractor a bigger window, you'll get a little bit better price because they can fit in where they can with the rest of their projects. So, yeah, it's it's gonna be uh figuring out, keeping safety in mind, but also budget and they'll get done in a timely manner, so. Um, I would like to do it sooner than summer if we can, uh, as long as it can be done safely.
Yeah. Okay, awesome. Thanks for the answer. Um, is there any other questions? Go ahead.
Just a, just a um, on the lights that are being put in. A number of years ago, um, I I believe that we sort of put forward an idea that any lights coming into the community should be having plugins on them. And it's not specific, it's not for operations, it's just for other stuff, right?
Mm-hmm.
So for some of the community program and things like that. Are we following that?
Uh.
And so my roundabout way to not really be in the weeds, just to dance around them, okay, just dancing around them.
To Councilor Colwell through the chair, um, not in a parking lot situation, um.
What if they found a big parking lot, do you know?
This would be on main roads that we wanna put decorations and streetlights on. Um, there there wouldn't be enough electricity, well, it can be also stolen and people that just plug their motor home in and park there and those kind of things, but we haven't looked at doing that in a parking lot.
True, you're true, you're right.
There are a big deal for plugging their vehicles in there in winter and then going in two places, so.
Yeah, you're right. You're right, okay.
The the intent of the plugins through town was for on main roads, for the
Christmas lights.
Christmas lights.
Well, and then in some parts, we kind of had the conversation, so that if they have the events that they can utilize them, right?
Yeah, as long as the uh, as long as the wiring is in the ground, considering.
Yeah, yeah.
With LED lighting nowadays, they they don't put wiring in for running P A systems and that, so nothing is going to happen.
Okay, I'll I'll back out now. I'll back out of the weeds quietly. Quiet answer.
Oh, um, I guess just because we were talking about the catapults and the garbage collection days as well. I know we've shared it online as well, but, um, yeah, I'm just wondering if we need to for using the billboard or whatever, what whatever methods we're gonna use to try and go defend people.
Yeah, all communication methods that we can do, except for mail drop. The Canada Post will be it's a tough one and there are other municipalities as well in the same boat who are making similar decisions not to mail out utility bills too. So, um, we're all in this together and we were best to communicate. If anybody has any questions or concerns from the town, you're welcome to call the office or come in and we can provide them with that, yeah.
And and we have to trust that people know they're going to have bills, whether they get them in the mail or not. They know they have utilities to pay for. And so, yeah, you know, for us to hold hands that tightly by saying, well, why don't we just wait until you get it in? Like, you know what, I have two young adults living in my home. Do you know how often I actually get my mail? Without digging through their trucks or something, right? That's just an aside, but.
Mm-hmm. Awesome. Well, if there's nothing else on that, um, I just wanted to say to um that the light poles with the snowflakes look amazing. Um, so it's awesome, tis the season.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, they look lovely. I want more, more.
Yeah, very. Okay, so we will move on to seven point two, which is the director's status um report. And um I will just turn this over to Sarah, if you have any.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, yes, so at our meeting on uh, our committee meeting on November the twelfth, there was mention about, you know, where are the benches, where, you know, where we at, how many do we have, et cetera. So, um, I actually uh had the municipal intern help me um get all the information for this and provide, she actually provided this report for you, actually. Uh, so we have the two left now. Uh, there was a lot that were paid off over the last sort of couple of years that I noticed. So the two we have still going are the 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 one for the Range Road two twenty-three by outside of town there and the lift station. So these two are, as you can see, we've put a listed down there, the loan amount to interest rate, the first year and last year. So these go to um into the two thousand and forties uh before they're paid off, uh, showing the amount of interest payable for each and also the total repayments. So um, you have an annual payment for the Range Road of a hundred and nine, almost a hundred and ten thousand and for the lift station, around thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Colwell.
Uh, thank you. Um, are there any penalties if they're paid out early? Do we know of these adventures?
Now, through the chair, the Councilor Colwell, you see can be. Um, we, you always weigh that up. It's to really you're going to pay off at the bench early. Uh, you can contact them and find out what the penalty will be. Um, at this stage, you're still fairly newish, really, and the way you've still got quite a way to go. Um, and quite a lot of um, quite high um money value to benches as well, so.
Mm-hmm.
So it's something we can do, call in and find out how much that would be if we're given to have that money around that we can pay them off early. But it would have to be an official for that.
Yes.
Um, so we'd always have to evaluate that.
Yeah, and I and I and I loved, uh, I love the way in which we approached it, our past adventures that we paid off. It was having the the reserves, the interest that we were garnering on there, was that more than what we're paying in interest and made the determination it was a a better use of that money to pay them off, right? And so I I I just, like, this looks fantastic that we're really only up two as a municipality. But boy, those interest rates are miserable, aren't they? Even though we get lot nice low ones, right?
Mm-hmm. So any other questions from council?
Yes, thank you. It's really forcing stuff.
I just had one question, um, about our, um, I'm not sure how to ask this, but like our total debt capacity, like how much of our, our, um how how we used to, how much could we have available?
Tell me. Okay, I actually just dragged up um the twenty twenty-three financial information midterm that is done every year. So, uh, based on the end of twenty twenty-three, our total debt limit is eight point six million. That's how much we can borrow. Uh, our total debt was uh two point one. Uh, there's also another book called
Uh, there's also another book called the Debt Service Limit where your payment, uh, how much you can actually pay towards that dementia uh has also come into effect as well. Um, I need to look into that because I can't quite get the our part of that debt service limit from this from this one. So I'll just have to look into it a little bit further, but I can bring that back for you as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I know, at the end of the day though, the the numbers you show are just incredibly helpful right now.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, thank you. Okay, um, we will move on um through administrative inquiries to uh nine, request for decisions. So nine point one, we have our twenty twenty-five interim budget, RFD. Um, and with that, again, I will pass it over to administration um to provide us with any highlights or information.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh, yes, so through the council, uh, presented tonight is the interim budget as discussed at the November twelfth meeting. Uh, there hasn't been any change as far as the operational side. There were a couple of things to just bring to to mind. Um, with the water rates, we have to, at the meeting, I was, you know, we have to make sure we don't charge less than the city that we pitched in the water from. Um, they had their council meeting, so I had a quick look at theirs and I had to add point zero zero five cents per cubic meter to the water rate that I had shown you at the meeting. It really did not change the budget at all, it didn't change any of the figures. Um, uh, very, very nominal amount. So the updated rates are are in this document and in the um bylaw that we'll be addressing later on in the meeting. Um, I also added a new reserve schedule. Uh, that had been asked at the November twelfth meeting, whether we can have a little more information on your reserves. So the new schedule will now show you exactly what's being used out of each reserve and what it's going towards. And also the yearly contributions that are going into the reserves. So that new schedule just sort of gives you an idea, a little more of a better idea of what we're actually using those reserves for and where that money is coming from or where you replenish it. Um, also, I added in a the five-year financial plan. Now, with within the NGA, there is a section where we we must present to council every year for your review. Um, uh, both a ten-year capital plan and a three-year operational plan. Um, I noticed that last year had a five-year one, so I just reprinted that um for the next five years. There's there's a a lot of work needed in this. Um, it's not a budget, so you're not like um approving a budget or anything. Uh, we do need to look uh further into all the different areas. So the objective of it is so that we can let council know what's sort of happening within the next few years. So for an example, say every three years we must redo our IDP and that costs us sixty thousand dollars. So rather than waiting till that year and then adding sixty thousand to the budget, we know it's coming because we've done our, we've looked forward. And so we've got twenty thousand away each year, so that come that year, we'd have that money aside. So that's one of the, one of the um good reasons to do one of these financial plans and that's some of the things that we wanna be looking at. And uh, so for next time when this comes, um, we'll make sure that this is actually a much more worthwhile document that will actually have some of that in there, not just saying um how we're addressing those things like that. Uh, so at the moment, it's for this year, it's almost like a housekeeping thing. We must, we must present it for your review to um meet the NGA requirements. Um, but it does still mean a lot of work. Um, the other thing was the um, there was some question at the other meeting about the RCMP. And they had just, at the basically almost that day, I think we were presenting, there was a uh a used um article that had come out. So they were going to raise, at the moment, we were paying thirty percent of the the base for uh towards RCMP. They're going to raise that to thirty-nine percent, um, but they're keeping it at thirty percent. I haven't changed the budget yet, just in case that base rate changes in any way, it hasn't for the last couple of years. I'm just trying to be a little bit cautious on that. So I've left that RCMP, I can add a five percent to it. Uh, but we can always review that before spring adjustments. So have much more of an idea then on how much that would actually be and then we I can bring that back at that stage and we can bring it back down again if if um if required. Uh, so they were really the main changes from what I had presented to you on November twelfth. So that's now just put together in this document for council's uh review and recommendation for approval, et cetera.
Anything, thank you. Um, any questions from council? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, I guess just a general question, we're still waiting on our assessment to find out the final tax rate will be. Do we know, I think historically, if I remember correctly, it was probably about eight percent um the last couple of years, I was gonna look that up earlier, I can do, you know, um. My brain just kind of do that for some reason. But if we do have like an eight percent increase on the assessment or whatever that is, if that's higher than the is there a chance that we could essentially be looking at no increase to the mill rate if the assessment increase is high enough?
Through the chair to Councilwoman Ackerman's. Uh, yes, it would, I then have to evaluate that growth, that new assessment growth and see what that would do to the mill rate. Um, the mill rate is is a tool to get the revenue that you need. Uh, so really, it's more that that taxation increase that is what really affects um the the taxes. Uh, but yes, the mill rate can be also obviously be affected by the assessment that we get. And it may be that we don't need to increase that because we've had enough assessment, uh new assessment to make that the same to get that to that same dollar amount that was acquired. Um, so we'd have to wait until February, I think, is when the the dues will send that to us. And then once we get that, we can analyze um that assessment a little bit more and I'll give you some more information um after that time here.
Great, just another question if I may. On the ten-year capital plan page on page twenty-eight of our document there, um, there's a couple um under the stormwater sections where it says catchment C two and then school site. Um, what does the SWMF stand for, if you can remind me about that? It's just down on the left-hand side, probably the third one.
And and the ten-year capital plan?
Yeah, just like the MF for the storm, probably stormwater.
Or the catchment C two?
Yeah, just how that's still part of the.
Do you know?
Uh, C.
Stormwater management.
Stormwater management facility.
Facility, okay, I couldn't figure out the A1 was. Facility, yeah.
Thank you, when I was reading through that earlier, I was just kind of like sitting there like, okay. No, that makes sense, thank you.
Okay.
That's it for my questions.
Awesome, thank you. Um, yeah, just to clarify, last year we um, we needed, we needed an increase from taxation but the assessment value was so high that we actually decreased our whole year. Um, so just to clarify, can I clarify for that? Um, I had a question about which, if nobody had any other questions, um about the reserves. Um, the reserve page on, I think page twenty-nine. There is um, first of all, thank you for including this information, I found it um very interesting. Um, for the garbage, it talks about a thirty thousand annual contribution. And then it below it, it has a um two thousand three hundred and ten balancing contributions. What is that?
Uh, to the deputy mayor. Uh, because garbage is a, we we're running that as a revenue neutral.
Yes.
So it's always zero at the bottom. Uh, sometimes when we're looking through some of the expenses versus the revenues from year to year, there could be a slight change in in that amount and leaving us with a balance. So for this year, we had this balance of twenty-three hundred dollars that was sort of showing at the bottom. So I've I've decided to, uh, I am proposing to move that to the reserve to keep that zero balance at the bottom of that particular item, the garbage um item there. Rather than having it offset um general revenue, okay?
Okay, thank you. Um, and then just another question um about the reserve. So when we have grants, specific projects that are funded from reserves, what is the current project practice? So does the money, s- um, like for example, like we're doing the website grant and we apply for the grant. So if we are successful in getting the grant, does the money go back into that specific reserve? Or does it um go into um surplus or altogether at the end?
Uh, yes, to deputy mayor. What happens is we can't use grants for reserves, we can't transfer them to reserves. What would mean is that the reserve total that we have showing here would just reduce by the amount of the grant that we get, we would fund the project with the grant first. And then once the grant is used up, we would then use the the balance from the reserve. And so if if we know before um spring adjustments, if we are successful with those grants, this will be amended. So show only the amount that we need for from the reserve. If it happens after spring adjustments, we can just, we usually bring that back to council and say, we've, we know we've now learned, we've got this grant, yay. Um, this is how we now, you know, need need council's approval to fund, use this grant for this project and amend the reserve to this amount.
Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, thanks. Um, so under, we have miscellaneous and general? Um, so is this, because miscellaneous is somewhere a bunch of small ones or we don't go on?
It's on my list. Um, sorry, through the chair to Councilor Cordova, yes, I did notice that myself and thought, hmm. Um, yes, it is uh, it's it is on my list to look into and just to understand the differences. And if there's a, if there's a need to be a difference, then we can always bring that back to council and say how we can merge those together. But yes, that's something that we will look into.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, Councilwoman, for trade. Um, I personally don't like things that are a little mixed, I feel like it's like a junk drawer. Um, and so, um, but I also, like, same with the community ag grant, like we just, or reserves, sorry, we have some reserves that were um being set up at one point that we're just not sure about, maybe we talked about this before. Um, but anyway, go ahead with your your question.
Yeah, no, I I was, I I don't, I don't, I'm not proposing any changes at this point. But it would, from my understanding, I think this is, this is really helpful. And I, what I would like to understand, I guess, is when we're looking at our CR five-year operating plan and how that will link links to our transfers in basically, right? So that, you know, we're contributing a hundred ninety-three thousand, you know, a a year for operating projects and contribution, that's because of these four reasons or whatever, right?
Okay.
That's, that that would be really valuable information, I think, for council to have. Like, you're talking about doing already, you're already planning to do that. But I think looking it back to this would be really helpful to, you know, some of these numbers, maybe they're just arbitrary, maybe they need to be increased, maybe they need to be increased. I don't know, but like, that that, they're having a rationale as to why we're increasing and decrease or why we're contributing to some of these. Um, you know, some of them are maybe more obvious than others, but um, like, I don't know that I've ever kind of seen it put this way. Uh, you know, in my time in council that, and and that, you know, all these numbers for annual contributions, in my understanding, that that's coming from taxation, right? So as as a part of transparency, I consider our tax rate as well, I think we should, we should be able to back those numbers up as to why we're contributing those numbers, is what was, is what I feel for this, so.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that's a, I think that's a great comment. Um, I would agree with that. One of my questions, um, kind of similar to that, was even, um, when we look at the roads reserve and the operating reserve, we put a lot more into operating um than roads annually and just, I guess, the the why behind that. Um, but then also, um, I guess, and I know we we plan for the future, we plan for, you know, whatever comes up in the future. But um, when we, when we, when we're looking at what we need from taxation, like, one of the things I was like, well, why don't we just reduce our reserve allocations a little bit to get that number back? But again, understanding that, you know, we have things to plan for in the future. But um, I think that it would be increasing that transparency and that knowledge of what's happening with the reserves. Yeah, go ahead, Congress.
Uh, yes, I do actually have schedules that do go out um as far as the tenure plan as well. They just haven't been included in this at the moment. Um, we could have, um, that come to other meetings, um, planning, strategic planning or any of those types of meetings, I can bring those schedules. So you can actually see how it all does tie together. Um, but they are, they do, they do exist, um, they're just not a part of this particular um presentation tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, well, we're speaking of reserves, um, under community development. Uh, if we're looking at what page is that, page twenty-three, I believe. Yeah, page twenty-three, so it's twenty-four on our computer, or twenty-three in that in the booklet here. Um, we're showing uh in twenty twenty-four drawn from reserves seventy-one thousand. So community development does not, like, the RCMP is not in community development, it's in protective services? No, it's actually not, protective services is our, is it just our um, our bylaw guy or?
Now, through the chair, the, at the moment, the um RCMP is included within the bylaw for protective services?
Okay, okay, so the cost, the increased cost for the RCMP is into that budget. So the reserves budget then for um what we pulled from reserves for community development? Do we know what that was?
The money coming from reserves?
Yeah, the, why we pulled seventy-one thousand from reserves for twenty twenty-four? Or was that a twenty twenty-four budget discussion that we had? It just, it didn't tweak any memory.
Uh, Councilwoman Ackerman, do you have the answer?
Yeah, um, it says drawn from reserves, like if you scroll up a little bit, just on the same page, it says decrease certain amounts paid towards the master plan ongoing. So I'm assuming that that was direct master plan payments that were not longer paid.
So we've paid for our master plan? Not yet.
In part, yeah, same things.
Okay, so it's been drawn from reserves and it's been held to pay for it, is that?
Uh, sorry, through the.
Is that?
Uh, through council. Sorry, it was drawn from reserves and um we're paying the bills from the reserve this year, if you'll put it like that.
Okay.
Uh, so obviously, we have completed um more of the direct master plan than we have left to do. So there's less needed from the reserves this year because we're going to use our reserves towards that project.
Okay, all right, yeah, because that's kind of what our, I I think that was kind of where my mind was at in our conversations where that when we're looking at reserves, it's going to be for extraordinary things like one-off projects or of course, you know, um, paying for our RCMP, um, our leasing bills now. Um, but, thank you, that's made some sense for me now.
Okay, is there any other questions?
Um, I guess, uh, would, would we, would, uh, would we, should we do a motion to refer this discussion to committee of the whole meeting around that reserves and what what constitutes each um annual contribution?
We, um, I guess I would maybe ask in a way on that, but I do know that um in terms of the overall budget, we we need to pass that before, like, it would be at this meeting or our next council meeting. Um, but I'm, I'm pretty sure um we can agree on that, but I would ask the administration to to jump in.
Uh, I'm just sorry, if I can add to it, deputy mayor. Uh, we are looking at, um, I think we have the the reserve policy listed for January for a review. Yes, so uh, that would be linked to all of this, the reserve policy should then explain some of those things that you're um asking. Uh, so I think if we could um have that early in the in the new year, in February maybe, then we could bring back something once we reviewed that policy and it may answer some of those questions that you gave.
Yeah, okay.
Very much so, yeah, I appreciate the the intent, wanting to make the motion to get it on the books instead of just something that we talk about and then we talk about again next year. And so, yeah, I appreciate that question and they have to, Councilor Cordova, that you have something?
Um, our community, um, sorry, our community funding project or what is it called, our community grant project, is that, is that budget item within community development?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so it's expenses, um. Personal contracting and general services, um. So I I'm just kind of wondering where that is located out of. Um, I was going to propose a small increase to that, um, if I, if I may. And I should, should I be, should I probably write it for this in our D.
We, I guess maybe we'll just ask if it's okay, I mean, to um tiny, because I'm not sure that, like, how would it work if we changed the budget after setting the budget, do we just make a motion or?
Yeah.
Um.
But I think this is an interim and then our final is like set at a later date and it might give us some time and then we just sort of have some conversation around this.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were referring to our our twenty twenty-four program that has been oversubscribed to.
No.
Okay, okay. Okay.
No. For, yeah, within our twenty twenty-five budget, based on that information, but.
Okay, do you want to propose a motion now, like, do you want to do that as part of um like spring budget adjustments?
I would like to ask which which works best for our uh director of corporate services. I think this looks like a really great document that we're probably in a position to move this evening if that's the only thing that we would be looking at adjusting. Um, and make it, uh, you know, if it's just a question of a few thousand dollars, it may be something that we can add to it before our final.
Uh, through the chair to Councilor Cordova, we can do that, it's, it is obviously councils, um, you have the councils to to decide whether we change it for interim or for the spring adjustments. I don't think it would make much difference when that would happen.
Yeah.
Um, but, I mean, obviously, personally for us, the spring adjustments would be better. But if council would like that to come in now, then we can absolutely change it, I can do those adjustments to that document and we can.
Honestly, and I'm looking at what the workload is because this is a great document and it's ready to go and it's ready to move. It's not a significant uh uh enough amount of money to accommodate the additional resources that we put into changing all this at this point. So if if I may, I'll I'll bring yours in our D for spring.
That's good, thanks, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, very awesome.
Thank you.
I just have two more um quick questions. Um, one is on the five-year financial plan, um, specific to um the administration November rulings. So so twenty twenty-five has um quite a large amount in. And then the the following years, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, they drop down to like twenty grand from um two hundred thousand? And then is it, is this kind of what you were talking about with the, uh, needing to build up this this plan stuff?
It's through, yeah, to the deputy mayor, yes, we do need to look at um all the years. I know that my predecessor had built um and had had some additions in uh to the future years. Um, at this stage, I didn't have the time to go in and actually go back and look at each of those lines to see what they would be. Um, and so, and as part of that, as I Um and so and as part of that, as I was saying, part of the amount that we really need to to get in to find out what these amounts are um and bring you back a a document that is is more useful for council for for planning.
Okay, amazing, thank you, that makes sense. Um and then just another question, um at our committee of the whole meeting, we had briefly talked about um contracting up services like weed spring along care. Um is that included in this budget document or will it be something that potentially comes forward with spring budget adjustments?
Uh through the uh to the chair, uh we were talking about it for spring adjustments. Um we have um had some discussions on getting those uh amounts for you and bring it forward for before the the spring, before the summer, obviously, so it's uh you can add it to the spring adjustments.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much. Um was there any other questions on the, oh, sorry, go ahead, councillor.
Yes, yes, so um I just had a question on the, sorry, I'm back up in here. Um so on under administration, we had uh the addition of the twenty twenty five website branding, hard debt forty five thousand dollars. I think we've emotional up to sixty thousand, so is the forty five reflective of the more current fear, I guess?
Yeah, go ahead. Uh through the chair to councillor Potry, we had fifteen thousand already in the twenty twenty four budget. So this is just the additional that was required to get to the sixty.
And then my next question was on the uh community center booking software under community hall. So the 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 it was removed from the fund, the funding was removed, I guess, so I'm curious um why that was removed.
There was uh sorry, through the chair to councillor Potry, there was an amount, um an extra amount in there for the setting up of this of the software. Uh so that was removed, the actual software is still, the the software is still there and in the budget. But there was an extra amount that was charged in twenty four for the setting up and um implementation of that software. So that's what's been removed, not the actual whole amount of software.
Thank you. That's all questions.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Um if not, we do have, oh, go ahead, councillor.
Oh, I was just gonna say I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes, please go ahead.
I move that council approves the two thousand twenty five interim operating budget as presented.
Okay, um is there any questions or clarification on the motion? Sorry, since it's so down. Next, okay, um would you like to speak to this at all?
Yeah, briefly, um I just really appreciate the budgeting process this year, it felt really smooth compared to the last couple of years. I think the process is kind of being refined to the point where when we get to going over the budget, it's there's not a lot of curveballs and surprises, it seems. It seems like a lot of the things that we have in here are things that we've discussed previously. So just speaking towards the process that we've come through, I know our conversations tonight haven't been that in-depth, but I think leading up to this, we've had the good conversations that we need to about what we'd like to see in here. So I just wanted to extend a thank you to administration on the work that's been put into this. Um I think this budget reflects the needs of the community and I think we're being conscious of our spending at the same time. So I'm happy to see this budget presented and I'm happy to support this.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this?
No, I think that was very well spoken.
Would you like to close? Okay, um so councillor Akram has made the motion that council approved the twenty twenty five interim operating budget as presented. Um and I will call the question, all in favor? Any opposed? If that is carried, um would anybody like to entertain the next motion? Just go ahead, councillor Potry.
Thank you, uh did you mark marks. Um I I move that council approved the twenty twenty five capital budget as presented.
Would you like to speak to this at all?
Uh yes, uh I I appreciate the effort this administration put into uh putting the capital budget together so that we have a a good picture of um what we are looking at for the next coming years, kind of council initiatives and other projects that are looking for community. So um I everything that's there is in support is are things that council has asked for and it's for the full support.
Thank you. Um would anybody else like to speak to this?
Um I I would have to read your website. Um however, when when we look at um this is what we've asked for, um but when we look at what we've asked for, I find it um mildly frustrating um that we would invest far more in paving a parking lot than we would in our wetland development project. And so my hope is, is that before the final spring budget is, before it's finalized, that we can have some conversations about what that might look like.
Certainly.
And look at uh the possibilities for uh grants or some kind of increased funding to that.
Yeah.
I thought that was, you know, but I mean, my understanding is as we moved that over, it was really just for a placeholder. Am I correct in that? Thank you.
Good. Well, and and if there are any um big changes like this force um before spring or at any point, council can make a motion, but I mean,
Yeah.
um feel free to make a motion and we can take it to council and have a debate about it and then just go from there.
I'll do, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, um who made that? Would you like to close?
Um yeah, I just I just I just think like if, you know, there's still a lot of decisions to be made on the wetland um in terms of where we're going and how much we're going to spend. I just think uh as a member of that committee, we're not quite there, um you know, including for our Rec Master Plan information to help us help guide our future investments, right, in capital planning. So so as much as, you know, I'd love to just know what the number is and and assign it, I I don't think we can at this point to have the information, so.
That's right.
Yeah, so so at this moment, that's information that we have, so that's that's.
Okay, thank you. Um would anybody else like to speak to this? Um Jesse, would you like to close or was it you?
That was my question.
Okay, sorry, I'm coming up. Okay, um with that, um councillor Potry has moved that council approved the twenty twenty five capital budget as presented and I will call the question, all those in favor? Um any opposed? That is carried. And then we will move on to the five year operating plan. Would anybody like to make that motion to endorse that?
I like that motion.
Go ahead.
Um I will move that council endorses the five year operating plan as presented.
Would you like to speak to this at all, councillor Caldwell?
Um I guess just that I really appreciate the stability of having a five year plan in places like this so that we have an understanding of what at this current time where our where some of our grants can go to and where we have to tax accordingly. So thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to this? Councillor Caldwell, would you like to close?
Uh no, thank you, that's.
Okay, um councillor Caldwell has made the motion that council endorsed the five year operating plan as presented. I will call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion has been carried. Um and then I will move that council endorsed the ten year capital plan as presented. Um I think that we spent a lot of time going through this um and to to talk about it and I appreciate all of the administration and and sort of working this for um and it it seems to be a good plan. Um would anybody else like to speak to this? Okay, and um I don't want to close at this time, um so with that, the 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 motion made by myself is that council endorses the ten year capital plan as presented. I will call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Um the motion is carried. Amazing. And I just wanted to say with all of this, um just to echo what the other councillors have been saying, um that this was a incredibly smooth process. I think that our comprehension is is up, but also um just um having this process has been been so good this year. So thank you for all the the hard work that's done into this. Okay, with that, we will move on to number ten, um bylaws and policies. Our first one is ten point one, the annual borrowing bylaw. And we are required um for the M G A to pass this yearly. Um we have a we have the R F D included, um I don't, do we need to turn this over to um administration? Do we just, okay, so will we open this up to council if anybody has any um questions? Or if anybody would like to sponsor a motion to pass the annual borrowing by law?
I'll sponsor that motion.
Okay, councillor Caldwell, go ahead.
Um I move the bylaw number four five nine dash two four, the twenty twenty five annual well borrowing bylaw, be read a first time.
Okay, would you like to speak to this?
Um I but I I do have a question on that bylaw.
Oh, yes, sorry, yes, please.
Thank you very much. Um I'm wondering, in our annual um borrowing bylaw, um do we base that on sort of our um our tangible capital assets, the dollar amounts, so so a percentage of that or how do how do we how do we determine? What are borrowing or are they just basic based on need, a couple of months requirements or?
Uh through the chair to councillor Caldwell, uh I can't really answer as to why we have the three hundred thousand dollar amount in there.
Okay.
It's not necessarily based on anything, it's for um operational rather than anything to do with capital.
Mm-hmm.
Um and it's sort of been in place and and we just probably have this in place just in case throughout the year, some of the cash flow might not quite be because we don't might not get our taxes till July, etcetera. But I think with the implementation of the the monthly tax payments, um cash flows from municipalities, I think, are actually um much better than they used to be in the past, so you had to kind of wait half the year to get your money. Um and the other part of it, obviously, is the uh for our credit cards, A T V require us to have the borrowing bylaw for these credit cards as well, so that's why the fifty thousand is in there for for those.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Awesome, sorry about the uh what the questions.
No, no, that's okay. I've just, I I think every year, I I just realized, I think every year we just sort of move through this quickly and people may wonder why, why are you borrowing this kind of money? Or, you know, so I just wanted that um to be um the public knowledge.
Yes, I appreciate the um question. I was looking at today in the M G A um where where the section where it talks about having to have this and just outlining um what any amount and um so it's just an M G A requirement, so. Thank you, awesome. Okay, so councillor Caldwell has made that motion um to um that the annual borrowing bylaw, the twenty twenty five annual borrowing bylaw be read the first time. Is there any other uh discussion? Councillor Caldwell, did you wanna, I think I skipped that further, did you want to open or close on this? No? Okay, um I will call the question then, all in favor? That is any opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Um would anybody like to make a motion for the bylaw reading a second time? Uh go ahead, councillor Akram.
Yeah, I move that uh bylaw four fifty nine dash twenty four, the two thousand twenty five annual borrowing bylaw be read a second time.
Thank you, would you like to speak to this?
Okay.
Would anybody like to speak to this? Okay, I will call the question, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Um and then there is um another motion here, I will make that motion that bylaw number, or sorry, councillor Potry, do you want to make that?
Doesn't matter.
Well, I'll make that motion um that the twenty twenty five annual borrowing bylaw be um considered for third reading. Um and just to speak to this, in order to pass a bylaw three times, we have to first pass this motion. Anybody would like to speak to it? If not, I will call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Councillor Potry.
Sure, yeah, I'll I'll move that bylaw, or by nine dash two four, the twenty twenty five annual borrowing bylaw be read a third time.
Amazing, do you want to speak to it?
Uh no.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak to it? Okay, with that, I will call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried.
I think when our director of corporate services speaks to it, anybody else trying to talk to this would.
Okay, with that, we will move on to um ten point two, the twenty twenty five fees and rates bylaw. Um and then we have both the the R F D, um and then we have the one redlined and the one which is blank in there, or not blank, not redlined. Um and as far as I can see, the only changes are to the water and sewer, which we had to do um as our rates couldn't be couldn't be different than Lefferts and to stay right in the neutral, that was sent in quickly. Um is there any questions about this from council? Okay, would anybody like to make that motion?
I can move the first one.
Okay, go ahead, councillor Caldwell.
Um I move the bylaw number four six zero dash two four, the twenty twenty five fees and rates bylaw be read a first time.
Did you want to speak to that at all?
Uh no, thank you.
Did anybody want to speak to that? Okay, um I will call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Councillor Akram, go ahead.
Sure, I move that bylaw number four sixty dash twenty four, the two thousand twenty five fees and rates bylaw be read a second time.
Did you want to speak to that at all?
Okay.
Okay, um anybody else? Okay, I will call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Go ahead.
I'll I'll move that council, I'll move that bylaw four six zero dash two four, the twenty twenty five fees and rates bylaw and consider it a third reading.
Did you want to speak to this at all? Okay, anybody else? Um I will call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. And then um I will make the last motion here, that bylaw number four six zero dash two four, that the twenty twenty five fees and rates bylaw be read a third time. Um did anybody want to speak to this at all? If if not, I will call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thanks, governor.
Thank you.
All right, we will keep going here, we will move to committee reports. Um so first we have eleven point one, we have the November eighteenth, twenty twenty four, Wetlands Enhancement Committee, Wetlands Enhancement Advisor Committee minutes. Did um either of the members here want to speak to the minutes at all?
Go ahead.
Yeah, we can. Um yeah, so it was a fairly quick meeting. Um one of the things that we're talking about was funding options for next year, we're also talking the timeline. We had brought a brief note back to council about presenting the timeline in spring, once we had tried to just confirm that with the Rec Master Plan. So once we get that information, we do have a meeting scheduled for January, so then we're gonna be looking at what our thought priorities are and then relate that to the Rec Master Plan and bring those um recommendations to council. And then I think once we have those recommendations, we're looking at how are we gonna fund it, what kind of money do we wanna put together as a whole and what funding number do these are definitely, so that's kind of a quick quick summary. So the next meeting will be at the January, January comes up.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions from council about this? No? Okay, um then we will just carry right on here. So we'll move into top, it's council reports. Um Mayor Martina is unfortunately not here today, so we will move into um my report. Um so for for my report, um we had M S D A last two weeks ago and we had home occupation that we approved um as well that we had the intergovernmental relations committee meeting. Is that just last week? Honestly, time is just flying.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, okay, that was great. Um which is very good, I I really enjoyed that meeting. Um and then uh I have my randomly committed futures board meeting as well. Um and then our M S D A meeting was canceled on December third. So coming up, I have my very first source meeting um on December fifth. Very excited to um meet the board and get started with that, um and hopefully feel councillor Akram's pictures. And then we have our land use bylaw review coming up on December tenth, um as well as the our Christmas house decorated contest coming up December fifteenth. And that is it for my report. I will pass it over to councillor Akram for his report.
Thank you. Um for recognitions, one of the things that I didn't have on here, but I saw on Facebook today. Um I want to give a huge shout out to the Culvers First Responder Society. Um they put forward a ten thousand dollar donation to the friends of the Culvers Elementary School for the playground and wooden replacement. So I know that that is something that is going to be well used by the community and I think those guys go uh guys who go above and beyond with what they do. So I'm forever thankful for what they bring to this community. Um beyond that, I just had the intergovernmental local relations committee um meeting on the twenty first. Last week, I had a non-urban municipalities board meeting in Edmonton and then during that, I had the outstanding resolutions webinar. So the board did vote on the outstanding resolutions. I think the only one that did didn't pass was the one um regarding um graduated licenses for the age, the the just general consensus was having reduced graduated license time at sixteen was a little bit too. I I think there were safety concerns with that and then somebody else did bring up the fact that if there was undue hardship, like if you had to drive to get to school or drive to get to a job, you can actually apply to, I believe it's the government, to kind of waive that, so you can get your G P L a little bit earlier. So the thought was just provide some messaging on processes to get around that and they didn't feel about that because the efforts and the advocacy efforts were there. Um beyond that, just uh I guess um one of the things that we got coming up is the staff appreciation committee. It's not a really committee, but I think councillor Caldwell are helping out on that one, so we got a meeting coming up early December. And then we have the regional council workshop, which will be a lot of fun to get people to get. And that's everything I have at this time.
Awesome. Um any questions for councillor uh Dekrom? No? Okay, um and I forgot to ask if there's any questions for myself, but I'm sure you would have asked them if you were listening at the same. But moving on to councillor Caldwell, too.
Uh thank you. Um I just wanted to really acknowledge the um, I guess, the community at large, really, because one of our favorite activities, um Santa's going loony, um they just didn't have enough volunteers stepping up. And so people were talking on Facebook and next thing you know, all of these new people stepped up to volunteer and they're bringing it back again, so fingers crossed that it goes well and the people are providing the donations they need to get it off the ground. It sounds as though I went on to sign up to volunteer and all the positions were filled. I was a little disappointed, but very, very excited that that was, that that had happened. Um so I really just wanted to express my gratitude to the community for that, and especially uh for the two primary volunteers who really worked hard for that, um that work with the Colders Elementary School Council. Um I probably don't wanna throw names out right now, just because like I don't know that I have the permission to be speaking about them in this manner. Um let's see, in in the last a bit, I've had some meetings um as well, the Intergovernmental Meeting, um I've also had the um uh Green Acres Foundation meeting. And that was on the twenty seventh. On the twenty seventh, I also attended the Pembroke Lodge Christmas Dinner. That's probably one of my favorite things to do, is to go to the different lodges and carry greetings from the board and um visit with all of the seniors. And I bet you you're missing that, aren't you, Council Portry? It, you know, just
It's what he means.
Here it is, but it's, you know, hearing the stories and um, you know, particularly for those senior members who don't have family showing up uh to be able to join their tables and go around and um visit with them. And I've been invited to the to cocktail hour um already, so apparently I'm pretty entertaining. I know, I just have to say.
I agree, bro.
Um what have I got coming up here? Um I also have coming up tomorrow evening, I have um FCSS meeting, and after that I do have another uh seniors dinner um at the Blue Sky Lodge. Um and so I look forward to that. That's one that I've gone to for probably about four different years, and so I really enjoy that. Um and then I have um, oh, I wanted to speak quickly about something, and I'm just gonna think a couple minutes. On the twenty eighth, uh they canceled the um Alberta Government um Water Use Engagement in person in Lethbridge, because they do have the the um um the election happening um for the West position, West Lethbridge position. Um and so um I was disappointed at that cancellation, but they are, they did do another one. They set up another one for December the ninth in Formclown. I don't know if anybody's interested in going to that. I have registered for that. I just really think it's important that we do share information um as a small municipality, uh you know, the impacts to our municipality. Um uh so I think I might ask some council members if they'd like to have some input into that to carry forward. I don't know if we want to send a letter to the province on that, or it just has to be a a sit down. So they they're undergoing a, they're they're undergoing um looking at our water use policy right now, uh looking at efficiencies in our, in how we manage it. And I know that um uh the Alberta Irrigation Districts have sent some very strongly worded letters to them. I know that the Alpoolman Watership Council is sending um information to them. Um I suspect that the larger cities are going to be communicating very strongly as well. And I wonder, and I, but I haven't seen anything that's sort of those smaller communities having really strong voice. But currently in our district, we we return between seventy and seventy-five and eighty percent of the water back to the river, um which is a, which is a pretty healthy uh return. So I just, I think that we need to sort of speak to that. But we can talk more.
That's what I see, I heard.
Thank you. Um uh to the chair, to uh Council Caldwell, um our Director of Operations was able to attend virtually on the previous one.
Oh, God.
And so perhaps before you um by the end of the week, we can connect you with him as well, um clarify a little bit of an update.
Yeah.
And then uh continue our conversation as well, um should the Intergovernmental Workshop come together, and you can, you can take the steps from there to work on advocacy for the town.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I think, yeah, and my goal of attending is just to really learn what messages everybody wants to carry forward, and to see if uh, you know, smaller communities are being well represented. Um because I think it's very important that we have a voice there as well. And so I think for me, it's more about learning uh and hearing what the other messages are. And then I can bring that information back, and we can um, yeah, and intergovernmental have a conversation around that and determine if we want to send a letter as well. We might as well strike, well, the iron is hot, and I think if we have a letter coming from Colders, it's just gonna be open. I just have a sense of that gonna happen. Thanks to some lovely advocacy efforts of our team. Um yeah, and so that's that's something that I've got coming up. Um and for now, I think that's everything right now, thank you. Other than I look forward to um checking out all the decorated homes in town, and everybody steps up.
Yeah, thank you. And that's an interesting point you you raise, um as as these conversations are happening, that provinces will be making decisions for this area, and so, um thank you for bringing that up.
It's it's gonna be a really tough situation. Over forty-six percent of the the water businesses are held by an entity that that has um, like, what is it? Is it four percent or? I can't remember. It's a very low number of our cultivated lands are actually being irrigated. So right now, seventy, about seventy-five percent in our district of the license has been used with our local um that's my rabbit hole I was going down.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
It almost may be late coming here.
We could all follow that rabbit hole um very far down.
Well, yes, we can, and I love that we do that every now and then.
The crops and the animals to have that water. Um Council Portry, can we go on about your part?
Right.
No, no, thank you, dear, uh, Council. Uh, be merry.
Yeah.
Um yeah, so I was able to attend that screening meeting, uh as mentioned, um council meeting, Intergovernmental Meeting, and then um upcoming meetings, the Community Irrigation Advisory Committee, um Land Use bylaw review uh next week.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, and then um, yeah, the Christmas House Decorated. And uh there is this Saturday, the uh Rachel Thomas is holding and hosting her Christmas party as well for, and that's all to Republic. Yeah, so I think most of the topics are already covered, but uh but I'm looking forward to the new year when uh we're starting up with our new activity structure.
Awesome, thank you. That's all we do. Um okay, we will move on to our correspondence. We have thirteen point one, we have the October tenth, twenty twenty four um ORS Executive Committee Mini- Meeting Minutes, that's a time twister. Um if Scott was still at this one, would you like to highlight anything within this report, Council Akramis?
Um I probably didn't get the minutes, to be honest, because Chris there. But one thing is the final budget is being presented to the board as a whole on the December fifth meeting, so we should have concrete numbers if that gets passed. There is a little bit of an increase, so we're not sure if the board will accept that or not, but um once they get the approval, then they can kind of get back into existing.
Mm-hmm. Okay, amazing. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to um other business. So we have fourteen point one, and we have um a memo for the Community Grant Program update. And then we have um fourteen point two and fourteen point three, both applications for the community grant. Yeah. Um do administration, do we need to say anything about that? Or just turn right in?
If I breathe over you.
Okay, please, right, sorry.
Yep. Sure.
I'm hyper aggressive, we really do.
Uh thank you, W.R. Florence. Um uh our Director of Community Development um pulled together some extra information for council, uh just because we're at the end of the year. Uh we also have budget considerations, which she has included in the memo as well. Um we received um an additional grant application alongside that information that council had requested from the previous council meeting. Both applications presented provided additional information to the application, so you'll see attachments in both there. Um and so tonight is about uh council reviewing the criteria. Um that's included Schedule B alongside the matrix to determine um if they'd like to grant these funds up to um the budget amount we have set here, which is three thousand thirty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Awesome, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Um okay, well, I will open it up to council. Does anybody have any comments on fourteen point one? The the, or maybe if it's easier to look at them collectively, we can kind of do that. So go ahead, Council Akramis.
Thank you. I would like to look at them collectively. Um first thing, um just, this one up. Just wanna make sure that I have things straight here.
Mm-hmm.
Um if I'm not mistaken, um the CES event is for Santa's Gone Looney, from the sound of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um when I look at that and the the rally behind the community for that one, I think if we can support that, there's gonna be a big impact on the community. You've seen it on the, if you're on Facebook, you've seen it on the Facebook posts, you see how you know, there's people asking if it's happening, it wasn't happening, and the whole community rallied together. So I think that this would be a big community win. Um when I look at
Mm-hmm.
like, I would like to see money go out to all different aspects of the community for the community grant applications, but when I look at the impact that this one's gonna have on the community, I feel that this one's gonna be one of the largest impacts for the grants that we've given out. So I would personally like to see the full amount being given to this one for the grant. That being said, with the Legion application, um I don't really wanna say bigger things, but at the same time, I don't see the same impact from the community perspective with this one. You know, I was just kind of having a double check at some of the documents for the um criteria for judging this one. And even if we're looking at the bottom, you know, they're talking about having um on that page, you know, they're talking about the um demonstrates a need for this in the community, right? I think there's maybe a few people asking, I think this is beneficial to the people that frequent the Legion, but I think there's still a lot of questions um that weren't necessarily addressed that I saw in the application of, is this gonna be targeted to everyone in the community and getting people together? Is this gonna be targeted for you seniors? Like, what, is it just gonna be something that's on a flyer saying, hey, we have craft night on the third of Saturday of the month, right? Or is it actually gonna be marketed towards the community? Because I feel like when we're looking at community grant, there should be some effort to involve the community beyond um I don't wanna say selective advertising, but advertising that might just be strictly to the Legion, or you know, maybe on the Legion's Facebook page where maybe not a lot of people are following along. If it was something where if they're trying to get it on the community calendar for the town, you know, I'd be more inclined to to see some support for that. So I guess at the end of the day, with the applications that we have, I feel that the CES application is very strong, it's a very high impact on the community, and I'd like to see full funding for that. That being said, we do have grant funding available, and it doesn't seem like there's any more requests for this, so I think with, if we were to give the remainder to the Legion, that might work, but I would like to see, um I know there's a recording structure for things coming back after the fact, and I would just like to make sure that we make sure that they follow that, because this seems like something that maybe this is just my perceived perception, but it feels like it's something that might not get actively brought out into the community the way that some of these other grant applications
Mm-hmm.
have been, like when we compare it versus the ones that we see some recently with the first responders under the house. And even um like even the seniors check, when we're looking at that, they're just talking about promoting Colders to the region, right? So I think it hit a few more uh the criteria for what we're looking for when we're making the decision on if the grants are applicable or not.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, go ahead, Council Akramis.
Um I, in the memo, it's identified that uh uh we have three thousand thirteen three thou- three thousand thirty-three dollars and fifty cents remaining in the community grant program fund.
Mm-hmm.
Um since both of these together total uh in excess of that, uh and we're talking about a difference of approximately five hundred dollars, um I was, if we decided to fund, fully fund both of these applications, could the remaining dollars come from our general reserve? Is that a question to your frustration?
Uh, it's really a deeply near to Council of Portry. It it can be come from the um reserves. Uh the only cautionary thing I I have is uh with the budget being eight thousand, uh if you, if we go above that, we're setting a precedent for um funding uh over in our budget. Um then that might come down to, you know, what criteria do we, do we go over, if we go over that amount next time? So you just have to, just the, just a little cautionary on going over and above the budget. Uh this time, maybe, you know, we've set a precedent for this time.
Go ahead.
Um thank you. And I I I was, I, yeah, I, that was exactly the thought that I had. The other, the flip side of that for me was um you know, who said that eight thousand was the correct number? I guess, so if council said that, then it was the correct number, that we kind of picked, and I don't think we had any data as to what
Why?
why, why, right? So um if we have X number of community events in our community that we want to support, um and uh you know, perhaps that number should be increased generally. Maybe is, maybe that is, maybe that is correct, I don't, I don't know, but council, I'd agree on that. But um being as we have these two uh applications in front of us for the end of this year, I I would like to support both uh fully funding them, is what I would like to do, so. And I, I mean, I can explain. I I I think, I think, I think um, you know, while I certainly respect Council Akramis' opinions about uh the the comedic impact, and I, and I agree that the Santa's Government has had a huge meaning impact in terms of uh all the people who are involved, uh I I I don't wanna discount um the Legion's efforts here um because they may, they may yet have a big impact, right? So uh with the reporting structure, I would be very interested to see, see that reported, see it come back to our, see it come back to council. Um one of, one of the things that I know that we had, uh we had other volunteer groups doing craft nights, which were uh very well received in the community. Uh they were running a cost neutral um scenario where you paid uh whatever, thirty dollars for your craft, and got your thirty dollar craft, or eighty dollars, whatever it was, right? Um whereas whereas this is more of a uh a, you know, the funding is provided mostly by the town in this case, uh so it has a very low barrier to entry um comparatively, let's say. So um but if it still raises people uh and creates a sense of community, I think that aligns with our uh strategic plan to to make that colors the community of choice, uh if if we can uh a small amount of money can go a long way.
Go ahead, Council Caldwell.
Uh, no, thank you. Um I think if we're looking at the budget that was put forward to us um from the Legion, it was one thousand three hundred and eighty-two. Um and so I feel as though if we have a, what is it, three thousand three hundred is our, what we have left? I'm trying to think.
Three thousand thirty-three.
Three thousand, okay, so, okay, I was looking at threes together, and I thought, gosh, we're only out by a few dollars. Um I, first, I I do have to say that I really appreciate the additional work that the Legion put in. Seeing, seeing the the proper budget, um or not the proper budget, but the budget in a way that we can understand what the items are being used for, and understanding that it's more of a craft cart to keep things organized as opposed to a cupboard. Those kinds of things made all the difference in the world to be able to um understand uh what the use is, and the fact that it is going to be used for twelve different events throughout the year, I think is actually a a pretty big use of that money. My hope is, is that they do get some um, you know, uptake on that. Uh I know typically, traditionally, a lot of the things that the the Legion uh does is, is for members. Um but it looks as though they are starting to open up their doors now to welcome more people in, as they indicated having, you know, space for the yoga uh group to come in. Um and so my hope is that they can increase um, you know, airflow through their doors, people coming in. Um I I would really like to support them as well. I mean, if if we can't add reserves to it, if we're locked in because our policy says that this is what it is, um does our new one come out in January of twenty twenty-five? Right, is that when our new um community sort of grants come out? Um I would, I would say that perhaps they could leave the the pre-cut machine off this time and say, you know, sort of apply for it in the new year, or something like that. Um I initially, I was kind of thinking, hmm, four hundred dollars for a pre-cut machine, but I understand they have to have something that's a little more solid for heavier use. Uh I don't, you know, I don't wanna break it apart. I just, I think it's great. I'm just trying to think of ways that we can accommodate both at the same time.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, re-
Um
Re- Sir Boy?
Nope, nope, I think that, those are my comments on it, but I I would like to have some feedback on what our
Yeah.
our policy says in terms of that.
Um I would have to have administration um to know that I think just as Sarah said, that if we, if we change the amount that we've set aside, um that we might be setting precedents for future years. Um but at, like, as far as I know, if we can make a motion and and we can uh, we just have to identify a funding source. Um so I guess the question is, is do we wanna set the precedents or not? Um why? One thing is, is um for the Legion, they uh did an application, we asked them to provide more information, they did that, and they're requesting fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
In the meantime, an application came in for Santa's Gone Looney.
Yeah.
Um well, it would be ideal to give the full amount of two thousand dollars to Santa's Gone Looney. I think that we can very easily accommodate both by giving fifteen hundred as requested to the Legion and fifteen hundred and thirty-three um to Santa's Gone Looney. and fifteen hundred and thirty-three um to Santa's gone with me, which I'm sure they will take. I'm sure they will not be disappointed in that. Um, and I think that would be a way to um to do both um while not going over the budget they've set for ourselves. Um, those would be my thoughts. Would anybody like to speak to this again? Go ahead, Councilor.
Um, I I I think I think um, you know, in terms of the towns, I I I certainly respect not going over our precedent of, you know, what our what our budget is. And I and you know, when when Councilor Colwell was talking about, well, you know, if the Legion waits three weeks, four weeks, it's into the next year anyway. Um, uh, if 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 this eight thousand dollar budget line item is so important to keep, um, you know, perhaps that is does it route? Or or do we, you know, amend the budget to decrease by the difference for next year? Or or the, you know, considering considering our budget reserves, I I feel like it's a relatively small amount that will have a big impact if we just approve them both as is is my is my opinion, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we've we've debated, um, maybe not debated, but we've talked about a hundred fifty thousand dollars for parking lot, three hundred fifty thousand dollars parking lot.
Three hundred fifty thousand.
And we're talking and we're talking about five hundred dollars for for a small amount here, so.
Yeah.
And I I think the amount of time spent on this is plenty and I and I would just rather just approve both of them.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Would anybody else like to speak to this, Councilor Colwell?
I agree, but but I also I also know that I think we had that conversation before that um they can't be getting more than their budget, that their budget requirement is. So I I the reason why I said one thousand three hundred and eighty-two is because that's what their budget line item said that they required. So I I don't know what you would do with that extra hundred and eighteen dollars. I guess, can they build a contingency into it? My understanding was is they can only ask for what they budgeted for. Uh, and that's the yeah, the Legion.
Okay.
So that's the only reason why I was kind of breaking it down and saying, really, if it's a question for a couple hundred bucks, I mean, if we're kind of breaking it down that way to make it work, 'cause you're right, I mean, that's that's kind of a you know, just speaks to the need for that hard infrastructure all the time and sometimes we overlook that soft infrastructure, which is that, you know, the gathering of our community members.
Yeah.
So I find I find both of these important, I I would like to support both as well.
So that sorry, just to clarify, Councilor Colwell, that total expenditures for the um so they're requesting fifteen hundred, but the total expenditures are fourteen fifty-one point one zero?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the is that sorry, I was just looking at the main number there, I just wanted to clarify to make sure that we're just having the same day.
Well, under budget page.
Okay, okay, cool, cool.
On their budget page, which is their second, um, the second piece there. Um, it just showed all the items that they were requesting and and the final budget on that was one thousand three hundred and eighty-two.
Okay.
And yeah.
Which is also different than the the.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, I think we have to expect that people aren't accustomed to to writing things and you know, we have to know that there might be a little bit of an error on this or that or whatever, have you?
Uh.
Okay, go ahead.
Just just to really add to this, so like when I'm reading through our community gap grant program, it just says there there should be a budget, doesn't say that has to, as far as I'm reading it, and it doesn't say that has to be exactly breaking. But I think on the previous application um for uh that we approved for the uh first responders, it was with similar question came up, right? So um
Yeah, mm-hmm.
and and we we moved it forward and I think that was something we're gonna look at in the future, so.
Okay, okay, um, Councilor Ackerman, you hadn't had it earlier, did you still have a comment or?
Yeah, I was just thinking, um, like I like what you were saying about, you know, supporting them. But if their number that we're seeing is the thirteen eighty-two versus the fifteen hundred, do we wanna do the fifteen eighty-two and just the rest of the CES?
I'm not sure, but Karleen would like to speak, so maybe we'll ask her.
E W Margaret, um, and it's similar with the other applications um within their final report if they don't spend all of the monies that that has to be returned um back to the town. So these are project destinations, but their final report will require them to detail that those final numbers and receipts and whatnot. So um that is a a final requirement as well um for that, so um as current policy says.
Okay, thank you. So um so at this time, we've um we've kind of debated without having a a motion on the floor, but um would anybody care to entertain um a motion for either of these? Um, go ahead.
Good, good. I I guess in order to maybe decide on if we're doing additional funding or not, I would be, I would like to move um that be allocated the additional four hundred and seventy sixty-seven dollars or sixty, whatever it is, um, uh, from general reserves to the grant, um, uh, whatever this is called.
Community grant program.
Community grant program. Um, and then if that motion passes, then we can just then then the other two motions are moved on, I guess. And we're on maybe not moved, but it's more easy to move on uh with the the actual thing just grab bring up perhaps, I guess.
Okay.
That's 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 how I I would like, so.
Okay, so you would like to make a motion to add four hundred and seventy sixty seven dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, to the community grant
Program.
Program.
Program reserves.
Grant general reserves, okay.
Yeah, and I think we need to really pay attention to the fact, this is the first time we've ever had to do this.
Yes.
Right? This is not something we've ever had to do before.
Yes.
As a matter of fact, we should have some access settings somewhere for previous ones.
Well, well, I guess.
But we probably just roll back into general, I don't know. They don't have a reserve or community grant programming.
So we'll we'll wait for the motion to get on screen and then we'll see if it's check, if Councilor Portrick's okay with it, otherwise we can um.
Move from the general reserves to the community grant program.
Question? Yeah.
I guess I have to correct the language. Sorry, is that correct language? Community grant program.
Yes, it is just we need to be specific about the reserve. We do have a reserve called general, is that the one that you were wanting to use? We need to be specific about.
If it's if it's appropriate.
Yeah, I think it is.
We don't have it, we don't have it with the community.
It's all our incentives, but it's not a
Yeah.
Right, it's everywhere. So I think we can use the general reserve, so yeah.
Yeah, then that's your flexible thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is that interesting, okay, is there any questions um or clarification on the motion maybe? No? Okay, Justin, would you like to speak to your motion, Councilor?
That's right, I I think I think we when we launched this community grant program, um, we were excited to see all the community events that uh would come to our come to our our lovely uh town of Colters. And uh it's and it at at first uptake, I think, was slow, right? We didn't have a lot of applications and all of a sudden this Christmas, we've just been um, we've we've got a lot. And I think that uh it was taking our taking the community some time to um move uh to to understand, I guess, how this program program can work. And I think uh if we uh, you know, uh, we wanna wanna support our community, um, not that we should, you know, just hand out money for free, I think, of course not. We we've had, but we have had uh the opportunity for for two quality events, I think, here and all the uh information and documentation that we requested uh be provided to us. So um, you know, if if we if we deny them, um, then I think that also speaks to our community. They're saying, you know, why not, why support? And I don't think anybody's talking about denying them here, but um but if we want to, I guess, encourage our community to continue to um to host good events, uh, I I think I think uh it sends a message that we're fully supporting them and and of course leaves the accountability there, you know, if there is an issue uh going forward. Um, you know, we have those reporting uh things and that is where uh, you know, we have a chance to review in the future if if that organization gets funding in the future. Um, but but not even giving them uh an opportunity uh to 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 fully fund the program for the money that were requested um, is kind of on council then if we don't do that, so. Um, I am excited to to sponsor community events like this. I think a lot of us uh on council uh ran with the intent of supporting our community and and this is one way that we can do, so.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Go ahead, Councilor.
I guess, just if I may ask, administration, have you ever received a report about after one of these community grants? Like uh like any sort of feedback on how that went or is that something that's just handled administratively? And if there's any concerns, that we got back to council at that time?
Um, to the chair, to Councilor Ackerman's, uh, something we can certainly look into. I think a good idea to pull together in twenty twenty-four, starting on on this and then back bring it back to council to look at in the new year.
Like just numbers of people that were involved kind of thing? Like how was our success?
The the reports back on the program, uh, the consolidation report um of of the findings from that report back and also, yeah, just some feedback as well from the community, it is a new program and it could be worthwhile to um look at that and when our director of community development is back as well, we can explore that front of it. Are creatures valuable or?
I just I just speak further, um, like the four sixty-six fifty, I don't think is a large number by any means, but I just am conscious of, you know, if we're going beyond what we budgeted for this, are there gonna be times down the road where people are gonna be asking for things because of, you know? I know there's a little bit of a push from administration to um inform the public about these grants and then that that likely led to the uptake of it. But it's just like, I I guess I just struggle with if we go above and beyond this time, like I think it's great to support the community and what they wanna do, but just what kind of precedent does that set going down the road, right? Is somebody gonna be upset and cause some issues because, you know, they put in an application in December and they get the above and beyond? Because like there's no rhyme or reason to when the funds can be allocated. So if everyone applied by March, April, something like that, you know, you might get applications further in the year and it's like, sorry, you know, we've depleted that funding, right? So you know, this is kind of a push at the end of the year. So it's just kind of, I struggle with what the future's gonna hold. You know, I don't think anyone's likely to really notice that at the end of the day, they may just think about it, but it's just kind of thoughts that are running through my brain.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor.
You know, um, I I believe, um, you know, on my House Council, um, we did a lot of decisions based on our concern about setting precedents. And I I found that sometimes that froze us in place. And I hoped that I wouldn't be doing that kind of decision-making um with this council. Although I'm respectful of it, um, I know that it can freeze you in place and stop for momentum. I think that I'm excited that we're oversubscribed on this actually because it means that we have leaders stepping up in our community and wanting to do events. Um, I also know that uh in the past, the town invested far more money in Christmas than what we're doing right now. And um um with the with the youth center, right? With the um youth committee that I was part of for many years, we ran uh big events where we had, we rented out a, you know, sleigh and horses and like we did the whole Big Bang kind of thing, right? Um, and then outside of that, you know, other community members were stepping up and doing things. And so what we're getting forward to us right now doesn't seem to be a lot of a big investment to ensure that, you know, there is some kind of Christmas things. And I would ask, I would challenge everybody to go and ask what on earth it costs picture view to do their Christmas event or or hold there. Just quietly saying that because that's gonna be next year's conversation moving forward for Christmas. Um, but yeah, so I I want to be able to support um our community groups that are stepping forward, requesting funding to to bring events and activities to our community.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think that there's been some really great points brought around the table. Um, I think that I would agree that I I don't want to set precedents. Um, I think that though we're we're getting to the end of the year, um, and it is just a small amount and we have done a lot of promoting of this, uh, as well as a few things like we asked the Legion to go away and come back with information, which they did. Um, and then we've had this um Santa's gone with me that just kind of popped in. So I I at this time, I would be supportive of this motion, um, simply because of the time of year and the small amount. Um, and so yeah, that's what I will say. Um, did anybody else want to speak to this a second time? Jessie, did you wanna, Councilor Portrick, did you wanna close?
Um, well.
Okay, with that, um, Councilor Portrick has made a motion that four hundred and sixty-six fifty be moved from the general reserve to the community grant program. I will call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? With that, or the motion is carried? Um, so would anybody like to make a different motion then? The next motion, move it on the amount for the Legion?
I you know, I don't know I didn't, but I'm sorry.
Oh, you already did?
Was a coffee paste and I shared it too.
Um, I'd love to take the motion for the Legion and.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, but um, Councilor Colwell, go ahead.
If that's okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to share the motion.
I, you know what, I'm I'm feeling this motion. I've got that song stuck in my head.
So so Councilor Colwell made the motion that the Colers Legion be providing with fifteen hundred dollars from the community sport grant to provide once per month crafting units to the community. Did anybody have any questions on that motion? Did anybody wanna, Councilor Colwell, did you wanna speak to that motion?
Um, I think I already spoke, but I again, I just wanted to reiterate that I think it's um, I think it's a fantastic idea. I appreciate that they did spend that extra time to provide clarity on our application and I I love the idea that that, I mean, that's, you know what, that's really a great budget for for twelve different events for our community. And so um, you know, just I just, boy, I I wish them all the success.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this?
I I think we've spoken, I I I think I've spoken, we've spoken to it a lot, but like, you know, already, um, but but I but I agree with what Councilor Colwell said.
Okay, um, okay, um, would you like to close?
Um, thank you, that's good.
Okay, I have a question, Colwell's in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Okay, um, would anybody like to make that last motion?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Ackerman.
I move that the Friends of Coler's Elementary School Society be provided with two thousand dollars community sport grant opposed to Santa's gone with me event.
Would you like to speak to this?
Um, I think we've had lots of discussion already, so I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this motion?
Just just again, it's Christmas. I'm just incredibly impressed how the community stepped up for this event. And I think it was just such an amazing learning opportunity for our community members to say, hey, you know, if we want these things, we're gonna have to step up and and get involved. And I think, uh, you know, a number of new parents have gotten involved now, so I think that's just so fantastic.
Thanks, thank you. Um, would anybody else like to speak to this? Um, and with that, I just wanted to say too that um I I, you know, I appreciate that this has um come to our come across council's desk and that we were able to support this um on behalf of the town of Coler's and make this event happen. Um, and a big thank you to all the volunteers who've stepped up to make it happen. Um, and then also just again, with the with the increase in the amount that we're putting in the community grant program, um, you know, one of the comments earlier was about, um, you know, if the program is fully subscribed by April, I think that would be, for me, that would change my decision with with extending um the amount offered to individuals, whereas like this is just at the end of the year, a small, small amount. And so um with that, very happy to um support this application for the Santa's gone with me event at the Coler's Elementary School. Would I, would you like to close, Scott?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mm-hmm. Okay, so we are at our closed session. So I move um that person to section nineteen, confidential evaluations and section twenty-one, intergovernmental relations of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that council enter into closed session at eight ten P M regarding committee applications and agreement process update. I will call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Oh, thank you. I hope that council reconvenes the open session of council at nine seventeen PM.
Call the question, all those in favor. Motion is carried. From this, just business arising from closed session, we have a motion. If you would like to make that motion, Councilor Kavla, eight one four five dash two four.
Thank you, thank you, I would like to make that motion. I move that Ashley Fox be appointed to the Community Housing Specialized Committee for two year, for two year.
Sure, great, would you like to speak to this?
Just that I want to thank her for putting her application in. We really need community members on these committees to help us just increase the voice for our community, right? And so just ready and forward to working with her.
And Councilor Kavla, would it be possible to speak to this? Okay, I will call the question. All those in favor of appointing Councilor, or Ashley Fox to the Community Housing Specialized Committee for a two-year term? All those in favor, sorry. Any opposed? That motion is carried. And we will adjourn the meeting at nine nineteen PM. Thank you so much.